Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the December 1st meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Please.
Supervisor Carol.
Here.
Supervisor Elias.
Accurate.
Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Bella Davis.
Present.
Chair Bronson.
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present.
Please rise for the invitation today to be offered by Pastor Jimmy McBride of Open Heavens Fellowship, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, to be led by Supervisor Elias.
Father Almighty, we thank you today in this season of giving and this season of gratitude for all that you have blessed this mighty nation with, and this state, and this city. We ask, Father, today, that you would bless this group of men and women as they make decisions on how to manage the resources of this county that you have given into our care. We ask, Father, that you would help us to be a grateful people, good stewards of what you have given to us, and to look out for the good of this city, the good of this state. We ask, Father, today, that you would help each one of us in this room to see life through your eyes, to get your perspective and your wisdom for the issues that we face. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. In the spirit of the Lord, for which we stand, of my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Part of the meeting paused for pause. Officer Foster introduces us to Betsy.
Good morning, everybody. This is Betsy. Betsy's about three years old. She was brought to Pima County Center as a stray, and we don't really know a whole lot about her, but everything that we've seen is absolutely fantastic, and we feel it should be a great pet in almost any circumstances. She's been friendly and interactive with the older children that she's met. She's been great with the other dogs in our care, and she walks well on a leash. We don't really know about her household habits because she is a stray, but for anybody willing to give her a chance, we have a lot of resources and support at the shelter that can help make a situation work if there are any problems. But I don't expect that anybody who adopted her would have a lot of difficulty because she's very trainable. Just a little bit of investment of your time, you'd probably end up with the world's greatest pet out of the store. Thank you.
Does that dog have any Greek heritage?
I don't know. We think she has some sort of...
I was gonna say, Howard, let me take the dog.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item five, presentation of proclamation to Joe Camarillo, Arizona Western Heritage Foundation, proclaiming December 5th, 2015, to be Bob Shelton Day. I'll move the item.
Thank you.
Motion in the second. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Supervisor Elias, would you like to make a presentation?
Come on, Joe. You got to stretch with me, man. Nice presentation. Nice proclamation here for our friends at Old Tucson in DC, who've been coming for many years, and proud to have you all be a part of our community, and certainly, Old Tucson is in all of our memories as this proclamation states. And, you know, my grandfather was even one of those extras in the high chaperone, not a lot of those shows. My grandmother was concerned when he'd come home smelling like beer, being out there at Old Tucson, sitting in one of those saloons in a TV scene. He said, "I'm innocent." I didn't even know that girl was sitting over there. Thought I had a way with words. Okay, here we go. Whereas Old Tucson has been an iconic treasure for Arizona for many decades, attracting millions of visitors and generating millions of dollars in tourism and film revenue to Pima County; whereas Robert "Bob" Shelton had the vision and contract in an early spirit to develop Old Tucson, bringing Hollywood to the desert in 1959; whereas Bob Shelton's leadership and direction, Old Tucson became the second most visited site in the state of Arizona, outdone only by the Grand Canyon National Park; whereas Pima County has benefited from the positive image of the rich western and multi-ethnic heritage and culture reflected in Old Tucson; whereas generations of families have fond memories of their visits to Old Tucson, a tradition that continues to this day; whereas Bob Shelton maintains his lifelong dedication to and love for the success of Old Tucson, as well as his love for the community and for Arizona; whereas Old Tucson remains a prime destination for visitors all over the United States and from around the world, thanks to the solid foundation that Bob Shelton established. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Saturday, December 5th, 2015, to be Bob Shelton Day, and urges all county residents to attend a special observance at Old Tucson on Saturday, December 5th, at 12:30, to celebrate and show the community's appreciation for the contributions that Bob Shelton has made for the community, passed and adopted this first day of December, 2015. Would you like to make a comment?
May I? Scriptash. I am Joe Camarillo, I am chief of Old Tucson, Arizona Sonora Western Heritage Foundation, head of Tucson. My name is Joe Camarillo, and I proudly, on behalf of Mr. Shelton, accept this wonderful proclamation. The board, I thank you all, and I'd like to extend a personal invitation to each one of you, including Administrator Huckleberry, to attend our great event this Saturday. Mr. Shelton does not know this is going to be happening. However, we're running commercials and radio advertisements, so he's gonna find out, but he doesn't realize it. We've got some wonderful folks there that will be speaking, from the Governor's Office right down to also the city of Tucson, and of course Supervisor Elias, and we're gonna have a parade through town in his honor. So we'd like everybody to attend. You know, Bob Shelton is a real icon in Tucson, and we're really proud that if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you. So again, thank you all very much, and it's an honor. Thank you.
Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chairman, it's an honor to present to Joe Camarillo this proclamation in favor of Bob Shelton Day. I last saw Bob Shelton at the shooting for the Empire Heritage Foundation for the Empire Ranch at the last John Wayne movie, The Shootist. Of course, Bob Shelton is such a wealth of knowledge, and he is a treasure, a local icon, but especially with memory of the very beginning of Old Tucson. Please give him our very best, and hopefully we'll see you on Saturday.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to item six, call to the public. You have, I want to remind those of you who wish to speak, you have three minutes, and we ask that you abide by the rules of civility. Christopher Cole.
Before I start, I'd like to remind everybody of two little things. Sunday is the start of Hanukkah, and to all those with a Jewish faith, I wish a happy Hanukkah. Monday, December 7th, is the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, and I think we should all remember Pearl Harbor. Not my comments. Christopher Cole, First Vice Chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party. Pima County is about ready to start planning for the budget for next fiscal year, and yet I looked at the agenda and redentum, and there's an awful lot of money being spent outside of the budget every meeting. Now, it's inside the budget in that you've got so many millions of dollars set aside for these things, but why can't they be put into the budget as part of the budget process? I don't know, but I've got an idea. When they're put in the agenda and they addendum, the consent calendar for each meeting, there's only like about a week's notice for people to pay attention to what the money's being spent on, whereas the budget process is a lot longer, months. And if these items, none of which are emergencies as far as I can tell, if these items are put in the budget process, people might start paying attention to where all of their money goes that you're spending for them so freely, and might start objecting. Just like with the last bond election, people started objecting to a lot of the bond projects that they thought were wasteful, unneeded, or just downright wrong. A lot of these projects probably come up late in the year, but they can be planned for. You can put in the budget that you adopt and say that such and such amount of money is going to be spent on this project at a later date, say September, October, December, whenever. You can plan ahead. You can give the people some idea, and give them a chance, a much better chance, to complain about how you are overspending their money. I thank you.
Thank you. Paul Parisi.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'm Paul Parisi. I live at 363 Sundhurst Place in Oro Valley. I represent an organization called For Tucson. We're a Christian organization that tries to be the catalyst in Pima County to bring prosperity through God's blessing. I want to thank every one of you for serving, including Robin, and Chuck, and Thomas, and our deputy. We're so appreciative of you serving the community. On January 22nd, we're having our annual blessing for elected officials and first responders, and I've given you all invitations for that. It's breakfast at the Vicent Suites Hotel at 7 o'clock. Last year, several of you attended. We had over 30 elected officials, including several people, the Mayor of Tucson, the Mayor of Oro Valley, and Mayor of Morana, and many others. This also is going to give you an opportunity to show your honor to the police and firefighters, the first responders that are going to be there. They've been really serving us, and right now, what's going on in this whole country, we need to do that. But we also want to give you honor for what you do, and we'd just love to have you come. Anybody and your staff would like to come? ForTucson.com/events. There's registration online. I'd like to see as many people possible there so we can start the year off with God's blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi. Judy Bush.
Hi. My name is Judy Bushy. My husband Bud Bushy and I are here to present...
I mispronounced your name. I apologize.
Oh, that's fine. All right. It's never been done before. No one has ever asked me to stand up, please, either. We're here to share our concerns regarding the Board, because it states on the Board of Supervisors website that all five members help to ensure safe communities, nurture economic development, sustain manageable and manage natural resources, and protect public health. So we have some grave concerns which impact all of these areas, and we drastically need your support. Full history, we purchased our property, 101 East Brutusville Road, in January 2001. There's seven acres that included a house and a guest house. It was historical property developed by Charles Herbert, who was the first motion picture south photographer in the state of Arizona, and his wife was still. And that property had been abandoned since 1984. It was totally in ruin, and because of ongoing vandalism, we had to have the Sheriff's Department come in to do an inspection. And that was our first experience with homeless people, because there were people living in the wash at that particular point in time. And he warned us of dangers. He shared a story with us about a murder that had taken place with two homeless people at Orange Grove and Oracle in recent times at that particular point in time. So we had a really scared view of homeless people. Since that time, we've had evolving concerns regarding homeless issues in the Pima Wash that exist between Orange Grove and Brutusville, and Oracle, and First Gavernin. And in recent times, there's been some issues north of Orange Grove and south of Brutusville, and those issues have been resolved very quickly because they belong to people that have that land privately. They've been able to get action. The area that we're concerned about is owned by commercial companies, in particular, the Cassus Adopus Apartments and the Oracle Plaza Shopping Center. About a year ago, my husband approached the Cassus Adopus Apartments manager and shared with him some concerns about camps on their land, and until yesterday, we knew nothing about the results of that. Because renovations have been done during the past year to the Oracle Plaza Shopping Center, we noticed that building supplies, such as large pieces of plywood and other construction things, were being incorporated into homeless camps that are being built into the washes. So we started contacting the people in charge of that shopping center and expressing our concerns. We've been since in touch with Ally Miller's office, the Department of Environmental Quality, the Sheriff's Office, and our concerns, even though things have been done, just continue to grow. I read an article in the Desert League, the Catalina Fittile's publication, regarding Tucson Clean and Beautiful. I contacted them. They contacted people for us. We're pleased that some things have been done, but we're gravely concerned that things aren't being done more. Yesterday, we visited the Cassus Adopus...
Your time has left, and you quickly wrap up. I assume Bud is your husband, right?
Yeah.
We'll maybe let him finish up a little bit.
So we're asking all of you to please cast ordinances prohibiting people from soliciting funds and donations on street corners, creating great public safety and sanitary concerns, and to do whatever might be necessary to remove people polluting our environment, impacting our health issues, and drastically reducing park property taxes.
And you have your, it looks like your remarks are written. If you'd like to submit them to the clerk, they can be then distributed to all of us. Your choice.
Okay. They're pretty kind of chaotic, but I can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Bud Bushy.
She said it all.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm, okay.
I think she never told you.
Okay. Thank you. And just so you're aware, I did direct several weeks ago the county administrator to look at alternatives and trying to deal with this issue, so we'll see what we come up with. Okay, Bud, then. Kristy Street.
Good morning. My name is Kristy Street. I am an Arizona native. I'm mom to three-year-old Liam and ten-year-old Scarlett, and I'm a small business owner here in Tucson. I co-founded NextTrio to provide professional IT services to small and midsize businesses throughout the Southwest. And 14 years later, we're proud to be in the top 2% of Microsoft partners nationwide. We employ 43 high-tech professionals. We've contributed more than $15 million in salaries to the local Tucson economy over the years, and we estimate that our nonprofit investment has exceeded over $1 million in donated goods and services to improve our community. So we are a Tucson success story. My biggest challenge to growth is the recruitment and retention of a qualified workforce, and I really am here today just to urge you to continue in the push for those things that make Tucson a business-friendly community. I really am going to ask you to harness the entrepreneurial spirit that has been the key to our success as a high-tech company. And this list is not new to you, but I would still encourage you, and particularly after our recent bond defeat, to find innovative solutions to provide jobs in this community. High-tech, high-paying jobs, of course, benefit me directly, but high-paying, good-quality professional careers are really the beneficial need of our business clients, so we want them to be successful so that we can be successful. To do that, we need to keep the students who graduate here local and not have the brain drain to places north and west. And I would just encourage you to do like I've done, and with my Metro Chamber Board of Directors hat on, we've created an innovative partnership with Earn to Learn, which is really going to be the new national model for university needs-based scholarship. So the Chamber is actually working to take that innovative model that's already in place, funded some $17 million statewide scholarships, and we're working to keep those U of A scholars here funneled into internships and really get them rooted so that they can establish their careers here in Tucson after graduation from the U of A. And we start that process early. So that's just one example of how I encourage you to look for existing initiatives and partner with them to really, to the Tucson horn for success. Of course, the roads will keep them here. Once they've rooted, they need to be able to get around, so we've got to fix the roads. I know it's a challenging and complex situation. And I just really encourage you to continue to hear the voice of small business. I know that you hear lots of voices, and I hope that some of my colleagues will continue to come and support you in your endeavors, and my door is always open. So thank you for allowing me to bring a little bit of NextTrio to your door this morning, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary Knox.
Yeah, my name's Gary Knox. I live on the other side of the mountain, escaped some of these property taxes in Tucson. I talked to the City Council, Tucson City Council, last April about the high taxes in Pima County, and I told them they drive away businesses. The main reason is that a lot of CEOs come to Tucson and look for, you know, a place to establish a business, and they find costs of doing businesses too high because of the high property taxes. They go up the miracle of Canada, where the taxes are half as much as they are here. You can spin different ways. You could say that the prison bond is too much, or they add it to the property tax up there. If you go on their website, you can find out that the taxes are half, sometimes one-third what they are here. And if you're a big-box business, you won't come to Tucson like Amazon, PayPal, Intel. And so we need to attract big-box businesses. We're on the north-south corridor from PermaSeal, which is going to take a lot of businesses from Long Beach, San Diego, because their taxes are ridiculous over there. The court charges are ridiculous. I noticed on Arizona Daily Star that your spending actually has gone down over the years, but taxes are going up. That doesn't make sense to me. Okay, let me see. We've got some fifth highest poverty rates in the US. Now, some people figure a different way, but I don't think anybody can say that we have a low poverty rate here. You go down 36, or down Floyd Road, or down the Dallas Highway, and you see people living in shacks and trailers. And I think we should watch what we spend. You shouldn't be paying for land, for open space, or giving deals to Mr. Dorn, $100 for commercial property downtown, or giving, or having deals with Diamond. He'll make so a lot of money, but you guys in business. When you trade worthless land up by Gates Pass for good land in town because he's in with your group, I think stuff like that is unacceptable, and I think that we should have a more conservative way of looking at how we spend taxes. And I know it's going to go in one area and out another, just like Tucson City Council. Ally seems to know what's going on. And let me see. Theo Blue, we had an accusation up there, and the chief said that we're gonna triple your taxes for fire protection there. And I asked, "Why is that?" He said, "It's the way Pima County does their taxes." People next to me, they said, "What about your house?"
Sir, your time has expired. Do you want to wrap up quickly? Your time has expired. Do you want to wrap up quickly?
I can't hear you.
Oh, you, the red light is on. It means your time is up.
Okay, I see that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Autobomming.
Madam Chairman, Board of Supervisors, my name is Jerry Autobomming. I'm in Oro Valley. Last Friday was referred to as Black Friday, a busy shopping day, but sales were way down. Now, why do you think that was? Because you, three, and sometimes four of you continually tax us, especially we on fixed incomes and with families, and what I explain businesses as well. Do we cut our food? Do we cut our utilities or shopping? We have to live within our means. You take the land off the tax rolls, which taxes us even higher. We are required to pay for your cars, so much are very expensive. We need a change. We need a few members of this board to be replaced. You have been here too many years and have no concern for the taxpayers who live in Pima County. Thank goodness for Ally Miller, who has helped make the board transparent and has had an interest in the taxpayers in mind. Thank you very much.
Richard Hernandez.
At the start of this year, I demanded that the board majority come down from their penthouse. Anybody remember that? I also suggested to them that they should let us out of the cellar and meet us halfway. That's what I said at the start of this year. It's very interesting, and I'm pleased to announce at the end of 2015 that many of you have broken your bonds. Oh, bonds, that's a naughty word in here. I'm sorry. Let me get back to this. 2016, I'm making this commitment to you, Pima County, and that is that I want to return Pima County to its rightful owners. You. I'm going to ask your help in 2016, but it might be a little turbulent in 2016. I understand from many community leaders that I've already spoken to that Supervisor Ramon Valdez in my district and his supporters are already out there scratching and sniffing in my background. I never thought my life was so interesting, but maybe it is. Before I came to this meeting, my mother, her name is Benita, she did the side of the cross, and she gave me her blessings. She said to me, "I'm walking into harm's way." If saying no to higher taxes puts me in harm's way, yes. If saying no to secondary tax increases, then I own it. If saying no to $320,000 in taxpayer money for the administrator's salary, I triple own it. If saying no to frivolous bond issues to make a few very wealthy at the expense of you, yeah, I'm in harm's way. If spending close to $9 million on soccer fields while our deputies are on food stamps, the people who protect you, then yes, I'm in harm's way. I hope some of you like my Santa Claus hat. I'm kind of chubby. I could probably fit the robe. But I want you to know that 2016 brings hope. It brings love and joy, which is what I want you to experience during these holidays. It is time for us... It is time for us to move to my ultimate goal in 2016, and I'm making that commitment to you today, that Pima County should be given to its rightful owners, all of you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I'm going to shed with you my mom's blessing on me. Yes, we're in harm's way, but let's do this for all of you. Have a good morning.
Brian Vickel?
Good morning, Madam Chairman. My name is Brian Vickel. Mr. Huckleberry. My name is Brian Vickel. I'm a resident of Unincorporated Pima County. And in the interest of transparency and full disclosure, I am a Democratic candidate for the Board of Supervisors District One, which may come as a great deal of dismay to the supporters of Ally Miller. I'd like to speak to you this morning, though, about the homeless issue that's been discussed. And I have some concern. Supervisor Miller has had several public forums. I took the opportunity to attend a Neighborhood Association meeting. And the suggestion that's been made is to contact the sheriff's office, which I think is good. And obviously, with the Bush's comments this morning, something has been done about the homeless. But I would posit that we have not one problem, we have two problems. The homeless camp down by Rita Park is being controlled. It's full of truly homeless people. I would also suggest that a number of the people that we tend to label as homeless, and it was pointed out to Supervisor Miller at the meeting that she had really aren't homeless. And she concurred with that opinion. There's a great deal of money in panhandling on the street corners. It's profitable. Some of the homeless camps have been broken up. They've reported finding 40 bicycles there. So obviously, there's things in the neighborhood that provide financial benefit to the homeless people in some of these camps. In fact, it was pointed out by one of the residents that there's actually a white window van that's been identified that drops these people off in shifts. So before we spend a lot of money putting up signs that tell people they can't be there because I haven't met a criminal yet that pays any attention to what it says on the sign, let's focus on eliminating the reason that these people are there. And some of that's going to fall back on homelessness. If you take away the financial incentive, the criminals will move on. Two years ago, every median on every intersection on the east side of town, Sunrise and Swan, Swan and Grant, had panhandlers standing on every corner. They're pretty much gone. I'm sure the left-turn lanes have become more expedient. They don't have the opportunity to panhandle. There's no financial benefit for them, so they move on. Yes, we need to do something to help the homeless people, but let's not lump the criminals in with the homeless there, too distinct, different groups of people. And we've got, that we're dealing with on the north central side in Costa-Cidovas, Lock City out of McGee area, are more of a criminal element than they are homeless. Although the homeless people are there. But I think, given the opportunity, the people that truly are down on their luck will take advantage of the services that are available to them. And the criminals will continue to be criminals as long as it's profitable. So let's fight crime and help the homeless. Thank you for your consideration this morning.
Thank you. That concludes call to the public. Mr. Curry, you signed up for item 16, I believe? Okay, if you want to come up now, that's fine. Okay. But you indicated item 16, and that was a hearing, so we put you with that.
I was just trying to indicate for the topic. Good morning. In 1987, the Star Valley Specific Plan was realized. By January 1996, the Board of Supervisors approved and adopted the Pima County Roadway Impact Fee Ordinance, glorified and entitled by Pima County Code, establishing a roadway development fee for those benefit areas established by the Board of Supervisors. In December 2007, the Southwest Infrastructure Plan was endorsed by the Board of Supervisors, addressing all infrastructure needed for the Southwest study area. The residential impact fee at this time was already set at $4,934 per new residence. By May 2008, the Board of Supervisors adopted Resolution 2008-109, giving the public notice of the Board of Supervisors' intent to increase the development impact fee. By August 2009, the Board of Supervisors determined that Pima County Code Chapters 1901 and 02 needed to be amended to clarify terms, as well as Amendment 1903 to update the current impact fee schedules from $4,934 to $9,500 per residence, based on an agreed upon number of permits issued. In August 2009, in the August 2009 document outlined in Table 1, a recommended Southwest Benefit Area roadway improvements, which included improvements on Hato and Valencia roads, the interconnecting roads, such as Drexel and Bahala extensions. What is clearly missing is the Camino Verde extension to Valencia. In a letter to the developer dated October 6, 2014, an offer was made by the county for the repayment of monies for the Camino Verde extension through an additional $1,500 impact fee, raising the impact fee for the Southwest Benefit Area to $2,000,000 that all were approved. However, the Star Valley Specific Plan defines the site project boundaries, and on Page 111 of the 1987 Star Valley Specific Plan, it clearly states the developer's responsibility. These three shall include the volume construction of Los Rialos Road from Vidiana to eastern boundary of the project, and construction of Camino Verde from Los Rialos northerly to the project's northern boundary, which happens to be Brightwater, not Valencia. In a letter to me dated November 23, 2015, it states that the developer has not honored his obligations in the Star Valley Specific Plan, and that the delays were having no impact on Star Valley. With an estimated $20 to $40 million in impact fees on the table, an enhanced tax base of over 4,000 additional homes, the question of the day is, why does this coming delay not hurt Star Valley? I'd like to take this moment to ask for some additional personal privilege to join our bank comment.
Thirty seconds.
As reasonable businessmen and women, you must see the impact. The longer the completion of Star Valley takes, the purchasing power of those higher tax dollars diminish. Our community needs and wants the infrastructure and retail purpose by the plan. That can only occur if a vibrant community is wholeheartedly embraced by our developers, our county government, and business community. Today, our view is that our county leadership is standing in the way of that progress at our expense. What I see is our county government's realization from the 1987 Star Valley Specific Plan that the transportation funding was not well thought out. This is clearly played out in the above tenology. It's time for our elected Board of Supervisors to begin working together in a positive and non-negotiable way.
Thank you.
For your resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to submit those to the clerk. That brings us, there are no executive assessors in the items, so that brings us to the Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards. Flood Control District Board. And note that I'm going to hear Item 7, Flood Control District Board, in conjunction with regular agenda item number 9, gratification of existing policies and procedures. And with the hat, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and move Item 7, the Flood Control District Board Agenda, and Item 9 on the board sitting as the Board of Supervisors' agenda.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. That brings us to the consent calendar. What's pleasure of the board on the consent calendar?
I'll move consent as long as nobody else has any objections or any items that they'd like to hear second, please.
Motion and a second to move consent as presented. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Item 10, under Assessor. It's a request for waiver of redemption. What's the pleasure of pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute 42-1153B? What's pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chairman, I'll move on to item 10.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to hearings, under Franchise License Permit, Items 11 and 12, these are hearings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on these items at this time?
Madam Chairman.
And I would just note, we have Mr. John Gowerley. He's asked to address us. Use our hearings, please come forward. And again, you have three minutes. Mr. Gowerley, you are the applicant, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I think of your time today. There's some incidents here in the sheriff's report that happened in the '70s. At my time from getting on, I did bits of reckless years. After that, proved wrong place at the wrong times. For 35 years, I lived incident-free as a real estate broker to stay in the battle. The last incident on the sheriff's report concurred with Mr. Patrick Clemmons. His ex-wife is here with me today. He's my fiance. It was, he was a total aggressor. I'd gone to her house to take her to a doctor's appointment. I were moving the premises. He chased me around the neighborhood in a vehicle. I'm back, called the sheriff's department. Said there was no criminal incident, nothing happened. So I left. After that, he apologized. I thought survived before. There was, I was told, there was no reason because nothing had happened, but it did show up in the sheriff's report.
You understand, it's just standard procedure with liquor licenses, they do the background check.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that.
Nobody...
Just want to give a brief explanation.
And you're opening? Are you currently operating the Longhorn Grill?
No, ma'am. I'm a real estate broker. I bought it to resell, to tell you the truth. I never planned to open it. The liquor license, I had a chance to purchase it to sell it with the business.
Oh, because there are lots of people who'd like to see that open for business.
My intention is to sell the business.
Hopefully, somebody will then open it. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
What's pleasure of the board? I have no other speakers.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor.
Seeing no one else come forward to address the board on these hearings, I move to close the public hearing and approve Items 11 and 12, and make notice of the sheriff's report related to Item 12.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Item 13. This is a hearing. The Field of Bond Implementation Plan Ordinance Number 2015-37. Actually, it's confusing because this says 37 and that says 47.
Ma'am.
Okay, got it. So it's not confusing.
I appreciate that.
Okay, this is a hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address us on this item at this time? If not, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I move to repeal or close the public hearing and repeal the Bond Implementation Plan Ordinance Number 2015-37 and adopt ordinance Number 2015-47.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Item 14. This is a rezoning hearing for P15R-Z0002 Jewel Revocable Trust, North Hidden Valley Road. What's the pleasure of... Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this item at this time? In opposition? If not, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I move, we close the public hearing and approve P15R-Z0002 Jewel Revocable Trust on North Hidden Valley Road to rezone approximately 3.9 acres from SR/Buffer Zone Overlay to CR1 Single Residence Buffer Zone Overlay as recommended for approval with standard and special conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission and as recommended for approval with standard and special conditions by staff.
I'll second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Items 15. It's a hearing. It's a rezoning ordinance, Number 2015-48. What's the pleasure of... This is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? If not, what's pleasure of the board? I'm going to move that we close the public hearing and adopt ordinance Number 2015-48, Item 15. Motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to transportation. This is a hearing, deannexation of public right-of-way. Item A, public hearing to determine whether to order the return of deannexed public right-of-way to Pima County. And Item B, Resolution 2015-89. This is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this item at this time? I have no cards.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Carroll.
Seeing that there's no one stepping forward to address us on this item, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing for the deannexation of public right-of-way under 16A. Public hearing to determine whether to order the return of the deannexed property right-of-way to Pima County. And B, the Resolution 2015-89 of the Board of Supervisors ordering that the public right-of-way deannexed from the city of Tucson, Arizona, be returned to Pima County District 4.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Brings us up to the end of the regular agenda. We'll now go to the addendum agenda. Flood Control District Board, Item 1, contract with St. Demetrius Greek Archdiocesan Church. And we are going to... No, that's just it.
It's Item 2 that's...
So that's Item 1. What's pleasure of the board on this contract?
Madam Chairman, go ahead, please. Move forward. Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Madam Chairman. Supervisor.
I distributed yesterday a copy of an appraisal that was done on this property for St. Demetrius Church. And this particular contract is for purchasing this land for $931,000, which includes the closing costs. The appraisal I received, which was done for the church, was for $650,000. And it was distributed to the board. And we also have an appraisal here, apparently from Pima County, that says the appraised value was $850,000. And we're paying $931,000. This appraisal looks like it was a very thorough appraisal done by, on behalf of Mr. Vince Jingress from the St. Demetrius Council. It was prepared by Stephen Cole and Thomas Cray, two certified real estate appraisals from Southwest Real Estate Appraisal Associates. And my question is,[1672.81] And my question is, why are we paying $931,000 for a property that was appraised at $650,000?
Mr. Huckleberry, Mr. Prell.
Yes, Madam Chair, and Supervisor Miller. The appraisal that we obtained is a county appraisal, and we always have a county appraisal with regard to the acquisition of properties. We don't know the terms and conditions and why a particular appraisal that we may have obtained was obtained for the church, and what the reason was. Ours was based on a full market value purchase of the property, and it was appraised at $850,000. Typically, our appraisals are lower than what private property that we attempt to get, because they may give the appraiser different instructions with regard to value, and that very often happens. The $850,000 offer, it was then given to the church, the church, and I believe through their process, rejected that offer. Negotiations occurred, and we went back and forth with the church and their leadership on a number of occasions, and came to the conclusion that we would offer $925,000, and that's the offer in the contract today. And that offer was accepted by the church, I believe the parishioners, as well as the folks who oversee the church in the state of California. So it's gone through that process. It's a particular piece of property that we believe, obviously, is prone for purposes that break out flows from the Rito River. It could in fact be used, but still would be required, and it would be a very extensive process it would be gone through to try and make the property usable. I believe the flood control industry believes it's in everyone's best interest to not do that, and has made the offer at the $925,000. I think I support it, and they support it.
According to this report that I distributed yesterday, so you all had an opportunity to review it, is appraisal report for market value. It was done for the church, and it's very detailed, and it's got all the backup information in there, and I find it very questionable that two appraisers can find it at $650,000 is the value, the market value. That was the purpose of this, and that was my understanding of why this was done on behalf of the church, was to figure out what the market value of this property was, and whether we take this in under flood control, I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with overpaying for it, significantly overpaying for it by 50%. So I think we need to, I would like to see us revisit this and actually look at, because we didn't, I didn't get a detailed appraisal from Pima County in the background material. I have a document that says that it was appraised at $850,000, but these are, these numbers are significantly different. So I would move that we continue this item to a, to the next board meeting in December 15th, I believe it is.
That would have to be a substitute motion, there is a motion on the floor.
Okay. Then I would like to make a substitute motion that we continue this item to December 15th and get some reconciliation between these two valuations.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Carroll.
Have I been furnished the information that you say you.
Yes, it was distributed yesterday. It came into my office.
Do we have a substitute motion on the floor?
We do not have a substitute motion on the floor at this time.
This one, Madam Chair. You can sit down.
It was distributed yesterday to all of you, it came into my office yesterday, and I distributed it as soon as I got it. Yes, it was. Robin Baco has it.
You answered the question, we don't need to be arguing. Thank you. There is a motion, there was a no second to the motion, to the substitute motion, no second. Motion dies, Supervisor, is that no second, the motion dies for lack of a second. And then Supervisor Elias.
Chuck, is it unusual for people to have competing appraisals like this in these kind of situations?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Elias, it is quite normal. And I think the issue is, and I didn't see the material in this district, anybody, Supervisor Miller, but I also think.
So you haven't seen the appraisal that we're talking about?
And it might be the date.
Then, how old is it, Supervisor Miller?
Madam Chair, Ms. Baco, we have a timestamped receipt from you that we took over yesterday. Why wasn't it distributed to the board members? We even made the copies for you.
Supervisor Miller and Chair Brunson, it went out electronically yesterday afternoon.
It was sent out.
So, okay.
So how old is this appraisal?
This appraisal was good for, through August 2015, and the county.
No, 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 when was it written?
It was written August of 2014, it has a point in there, timeframe, one of those appraisals go for that length of time, so it was good through August 2015. And Pima County's appraisal, my understanding, is even older than that.
Our appraisal was even older than that?
Yes, and when you start looking at this, you wonder why people don't trust us? We need to make sure that we're spending the money wisely, and that, I don't see the issue with continuation, is to make sure that we're in line, that the property is in fact worth this. I understand everyone wants to hurry this through, but I think in this case, when you have a $200,000 difference in the appraisal, that we might want to take pause and take a step back and reevaluate this. And again, even Pima County's appraisal is at $850,000, and we're offering $931,000.
And that's not unusual in terms of negotiations that take place between landowners and property that we move to purchase as well. And so, I think we should go ahead and vote on the motion that's on the floor right now, and proceed with figuring out how we're going to do this.
Are there any further comments? Any further comments? Then I'll call the question. All who are in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I object.
One objection. Motion carries four to one. Moving on to Item 2, Purchase/Sale of Real Property, Resolution 2015-FC3. What's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and move Item 2, including Resolution 2015-FC3, and also include, now that's on the Flood Control District Board agenda, I should say, and on.
Right, on Item.
Board of Supervisors' Addendum, Item 3, I move A and B, including Resolution 2015-9.
Thank you. Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, Item 2, under Flood Control District Board, carries. And Item 3, under Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Board of Supervisors, 3A and B, carry. Moving on then to Contracts and Warrants, Information Technology, Item 4, what's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Move approval.
I'll second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're now under procurement, Items 5, 6, and 7, and 8. Does anybody wish to divide the question? If not, what's the pleasure of the board on these items?
Second.
Motion in a second, any objections?
One.
One objection, Supervisor Elias. Hearing no further objection, motion carries. Moving on to Item 9 and 10, what's the pleasure of the board on these items? These are brand acceptances, pardon, help. Motion in a second, any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Brings us to the end of today's meeting. We bring over to business, this meeting stands adjourned without objection. Our next meeting is December 15th.